America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we open the meeting for public comment, I know that some people have reached out for the opportunity to speak, and I know Senator Brewer Emeritus is here to make some presentations from the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen. I bring good tidings and joy, which is the only reason I come to these meetings, quite honestly. Over the years, the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation over the last six years has distributed over half a million dollars to organizations in the Princeton, Paxton, Barry, and Quavon regional area. And as I've said many times, you could not bake enough oatmeal raisin cookies for these charitable organizations. There are many, many entities that do great things around here that don't necessarily have a title as well. And I'm thinking about this fellow right here, if I may, while I have the floor, my neighbor. One time he came knocking on my door when he was on the Barrytown Common Improvement Committee, and he was about as dirty as you could have ever found anyone because he was crawling through the underground culverts on Barry Common that were put in there 100 years, 150 years ago with a flashlight looking at things. And there was above and beyond the call of duty, and I think that as you look at the Barry Common with the $3.2 million that we were successfully able to effectuate for there, and I wanted to take that moment to commend my friend in that regard. And I think there are now over 19 flags in public places in Barry that my friend Dennis Fleming lowers a flag to half mast very dutifully. And if I'm not, if I'm out of state, I text him and I say, "Will you put my flag down as well?" He does a great job for us, and we owe you a debt of gratitude as well. And over the years, some of the things that we have done in this regard for the charitable foundation, I did want, before I forget, we're going to do $1,000 for the Barry Seniors at Grandview for their Christmas party. I think this is the third year in a row that we do that. For all of us, really happy to see how this beautiful town common looks at Christmas time. And again, some of those things get to be quite expensive, and I think it's a good thing in Sandy Hood and her team of volunteers that has done that, and the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation through the town of Barry, which we know in their good graces will distribute that. But I'll let her put her hands on this as well, to Sandy for the check for $4,000 for lights for the Christmas. People have business to do. And for those that, for this year's round of funding, in Okim, they're in the back of the Okim Library, they're going to do a children's garden, too. When children get involved with reading, they associate that with love and comfort, and there will be readers and learned people forever. And so we're doing $5,000 over to the Forbes Library as well. And we've done some, we've done some good help, the great work that Lucy Allen, that Superintendent Marshall, Anne Mailis have done relative to bringing dignity to the Lakota Sioux Indians and returning artifacts that rightfully belong to them. And if anybody's followed my postings, I often quote Dr. Martin Luther King, who said, "There's never a wrong time to do the right thing." And I'm really proud of what we have done. They've done a lot, a lot of work. And I have the list of them if anybody ever needs them, or else bring them with me, of course. 28 years ago in July, Barry lost a beautiful person, our former police chief, Michael Ryder. When I pray at night, I still pray for Michael. It's hard to believe, it's 28 years, quite honestly. And Maureen Marshall and I gave the eulogies at Michael's funeral that long ago. And Chief Saboran has come up with a really fine idea, I believe, that the monument on Barry Plains to Michael Ryder should go up to the Barry Public Safety Building complex. Dennis has retained and gathered steel from the World Trade Center for the 9/11 memorial, and Michael will be home. Michael's memory will be home. At 75 years old in February, I understand how time is fleeting, and people forget, and people will ride by that monument down there in Barry Plains Path and say, "Who is he?" Actually, somebody said that to me today, and I understand because time marches on. But to have that monument brought up to the Public Safety Building with landscaping and cleaning of the monument and having him there, and all the other law enforcement people that will come there, and the emergency rescue squad people, that is a very noble cause. Chief, I commend you for the vision and for the idea. I know several other police officers are out there. They thought I was going to cause mayhem or something, but in that regard, so I want to, through the town of Barry, I want to present, for this project, a check for $5,000 for...
The chief is here. Chief, if you'd like to accept that.
Yeah. Bob, that'll do it. Details.
Thank you very much, Chief.
So, get this, this is through the town, and, you know, the foundation is always comfortable filtering money through the town office because it gets to the right places, and that's good. Sometimes we are concerned about those things as well. If you turn around there, they'll take some pictures, and you hold up the check.
Feel free.
Stand up with your check as well, Sandy.
Amy, you need to be in.
Yeah, Amy.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Sandy, you got your picture taken with that? Get one with Sandy, too. Sandy comes, opens this building up on Fridays.
What about Amy in the picture?
All right. Thank you. Again, Maureen serves on that board with me, and I would be remiss if I didn't name all of the members of this board as well, myself, Brian Sirelli, Paul Cranston, Danny Haynes, Anne Mailis, Tom Mertzick, Becky Tuttle, and of course, Maureen and myself. This fund is an interest-bearing account that will never be depleted. So, this is an ongoing project. I would urge people that hear of things that need to be done in this region to let us know. We need a two-week window before we vet these things, and our next meeting is maybe mid-December. So during November, if you've got an idea, something good, to do good things, because I think Barry is better for the resources that we put in there. And last but not least, I commend the three members of the Board of Selectmen. I served seven years on that side of the table. I actually moved this table in from the Barry Wool Comby Company office, corporate office, that long ago, a long time ago.
You should have gotten an award for that.
And I think if there's a siren up above the fire escape, up in the roof still, is that still up there? Howard Thompson, Howard, Jason, Howard Thompson and I brought that up with ropes as well. So that's how far back we go. So, good luck to you. Good luck. Be glad you're not in Palmer tonight, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Oh, you don't want to know.
Oh, I do.
Later, I'll tell you after. Bye.
Right, so, that, we wanted, we wanted to take care of, is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, I think everybody else is on, on the agenda, so...
We should make an official motion to accept those checks and disperse them to those towns, the departments.
Would you make that as a motion?
I would make a motion to accept both those checks on behalf of the bank for the town of Barry and disseminate those checks as requested or needed by those two departments.
We have a motion made and seconded to do the appropriate financial machinations with those checks. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like it's a unanimous vote, and again, thanks to the Barry Savings Foundation for their assistance on those two items. Okay, let's just, if you're having no public comment?
Yeah.
There you go, Wayne.
What is happening in Stetson Road? Why hasn't the Department of Public Works doing it? Whether that's Public Works or whether...
Public Works, yes.
Okay. There's no drawings or no nothing. Nobody will talk to anybody?
Well, I, when you and I...
I have asked the Select Committee here to talk to me, and nobody will talk to me.
Well, Wayne, I don't...
I have called the office.
Okay, I don't think that that's true. You and I had spoken, I set up a meeting...
One night.
Yeah, I set up a meeting with the Department of Public Works Superintendent, and I understand that you finally, you two finally had an opportunity to discuss, discuss the issues that you had. I believe we have a DPW meeting tomorrow night at 6:30.
Supposedly. They haven't had one since you and I spoke, early spring.
Well, we may have, yeah. I wish I could tell you that that was something this board could...
We share your frustration.
Yeah, we share your frustration.
We've been taking steps to try to change it.
I know the words, Paul. Everybody tells me they had to do it this way and so on. Why no drawings? Why no meeting with the property owners? Why no appropriations in the town of Barry? Where's the money coming from?
There's Chapter 90 funds which were approved by the Board of Selectmen to pave Stetson Road.
Yeah.
Now, to pave the road, once that's approved, the town takes certain steps to prepare the side of the roads for drainage, trees and overhangs and such like that until the company can come in and actually do the paving. There shouldn't be any plans or drawings because they're not doing anything greatly...
They widened it. They pushed the stone walls back.
They shouldn't have pushed stone walls back without going through conservation.
They pushed stone walls back. They're all full of gravel and everything else. Beautiful little back road.
You're right.
A beautiful little back road.
And we...
And you go and screw it up by pushing everything away. Pick up the stones, move them, do your road, and put the stones down. It's a small town.
I understand and agree with your frustration, the things like...
And they're taking three quarters of the water off of that road and putting it on my land. Three quarters!
That shouldn't happen either.
Well, I, Wayne, I think it...
We need to have a meeting with that.
I think it's important for you to make every effort to...
Why didn't somebody call me back about tonight's meeting? Why couldn't we work this in?
What's tonight?
What about tonight's meeting?
Tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
Understand, I, I, this board cannot operate independently of the commission. The Department of Public Works Commission was created by special legislation for this community. Whether it's the right thing or was it ever the right thing to organize it that way, I guess we'll all...
Who authorized to do this, this way? They haven't had a meeting.
Well, I would tell you that the Stetson Home conversations were probably had a year ago, 18 months ago. They started to have conversations about Stetson Road. And have there been, you know, meetings every month as scheduled?
No meetings, no engineering, no nothing. We talked to the property owners.
Well, there's been, there's been meetings, there's been meetings, whether or not there's been property, conversations with property owners...
When were the meetings?
They, I could probably have you, give you a list of the ones that we actually had.
I'd like a list of every meeting they had that was posted for the public.
Okay. I can give you that, and certainly there's many of them that have been canceled, and it is a great frustration, not only to you but to us. We understand that that is, has been difficult.
What do I do now? Did you, did you authorize paying double time to pave that road?
We don't...
It was prevailing wages, and, and you did it on Monday, on paid state holiday.
Well, I don't know who actually drove the trucks. I don't know if they were paying prevailing wage or not, whether or not...
You should know. There wasn't one bid go out for that job that I know of.
Right, it's true.
That's why I'm ripping.
Yes, sir, the, the roads every year are approved with Chapter 90 funds. We are allocating Chapter 90 funds from the state every year, typically someplace in the neighborhood of $350,000 of...
You can't build the whole road on a, on a...
Please, please let me finish my statement. Please let me finish my statement. So each year, the Select Board is charged with deciding what roads, which are recommended by the commission. The DPW Commission, or specifically the Highway Superintendent, will recommend roads in town that might be repaved or paved over. We do attempt to remove a dirt road every year. We're working towards having no more dirt roads, so we don't have to beat up any equipment and repair news.
And then have a that chapter? That's maintenance.
But, the Stetson Road was approved...
This is engineering.
There's no engineering that I know of for Stetson Road.
Why not? But there should have been.
I don't know that.
Why not?
I would say that as frustrated as you all are, okay, as frustrated as you all are, this is not the right agency to come and complain to. You have to complain to the...
If you don't keep the, how are the public works...
You have no authority.
We, we have no...
You are superseding.
No.
No, we're not.
I wish that were, I wish that were the case.
The town took that away years ago when they made the Dividend Commission.
Well, then how come you tell which roads to repair?
He meant, not us, that we get together in a group of nine people. There are three sewer commissioners, three water commissioners, and three selectmen.
You've got types of water commissioners.
The decision which roads, which roads to pave is the Select Board's decision. So how the Chapter 90 funds are spent for what roads to pave is voted on by this board. It's recommended by that commission, and we typically follow that commission's recommendation on the roads we authorize to, to pave. And it's done that way because this board, the chairman, is obligated to sign the Chapter 90 paperwork when it's completed, and it goes for the Highway Superintendent, the Select Board Chairman will sign it, and then it goes off to our accountant for approval. And if it's all done properly, we get reimbursed from the state. There's a whole process to why it goes that way.
How come I read about Loring Road all through, a year ago or two years ago? Stetson Road got zero.
Got zero...
Why the difference?
You mean attention in the paint newspaper?
Yeah. You had meetings with the property owners down there and everything.
Well, that was before my time.
You didn't have any meetings, well, I...
Well, I think that reason that that was an issue, it was, there was, there were several individuals that did not want that road paved.
I don't want that, I don't want Stetson Road paved.
Several that attended meetings and wrote letters, and because of that, we had postponed it to have an actual hearing, and a public hearing about the road and heard people's concerns. And the Board of Selectmen at the time decided that we would defer to the DPW Commission's joint decision on what to do with the road for that immediate season.
Are we talking Stetson Road?
Loring Road, Loring Road, because there were drainage concerns.
Yeah, and it still is.
And they, well, because the drainage, the drainage concerns...
Well, I was told the other day, the drainage that you put in goes right into our wetlands.
I can explain to you what took place.
What road are you talking about now?
Loring Road.
We're talking about Loring Road now?
I can explain to you how that proceeded and why it's, why it was done the way it was done. As far as Stetson Road goes, we have had some letters sent to us, which would be saying, "We have to take it up at a commission meeting." As, as you clearly see, we don't get to have our commission meetings. I'm as frustrated as you are, this is one of the things I want to talk about there. School Street's another one. We've been, we authorized the talk coding in School Street last year, it wasn't done, and we authorized it over a month and a half ago this year, and it's still not done. And I have no answers to why, because the commission doesn't meet. We are equally frustrated, we've been, we had a, quite an email conversation between different members of the commission trying to hold a meeting last Tuesday.
What does that leave me now, with all this water?
We should have a, we should have a meeting tomorrow night, the DPW Commission, at 7 o'clock, down at the Highway Barn.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30 now.
It'll be posted.
6:30 is water, I think.
6:30 is water. So, it's DPW.
Okay, it should be, yeah.
Well, I would, I would just say, don't be late.
But that's, that's the best chance to air it. Bring friends, bring a letter, bring pictures.
I don't need, all you have to do is just drive the road. I don't need...
But we can't go drive the road from the meeting. So if you want to reinforce what you're stating, bring a couple snapshots to the meeting and the whole, they can't deny seeing it. You can't make nine members leave there and go look at what you're seeing, or see it in the daylight when you see it. So that you're, I'm giving you your best choices. Bring some pictures, write a...
I don't have that. I don't have a smartphone, if that's what you're thinking.
I'm sure you can find someone that does, though, to take a couple pictures for you. They, they could be emailed to Jessica, to anyone up here on the board, and we can get them down there. But I can only bring down one picture, send me, people send me pictures and emails, I bring them to those meetings, and we go through them at those meetings. And that's also happened with drainage issues on, um...
I'll tell you, I'm awfully disturbed with the Select Committee that's here.
I'm in agreement. I am awfully disappointed.
Well, Wayne, I wish...
You did not treat me right. You did drive to my house and tell my wife that you saw me driving up on my lawn tractor, but when I saw it was you, and you just backed right out of the drive and kept on going.
Well, understand, because I couldn't reach you by phone...
And after that, I made four or five phone calls upstairs.
Okay.
And you still didn't call.
When I still, okay, when I made arrangements for you to meet with the Department of Public Works Superintendent.
Wait, for two months, and he didn't show up?
I understand that, but I didn't understand that till after the fact, okay? He then, okay, I talked with him, and he met with you immediately, I think, after that. There's, okay, there's no question that I wish I had authority to say to you, "Take this board, these three people will take care of this." I can't, he can't, he can't, because the way in which this department is organized is by state statute, and it is not the way most towns are organized, it's not necessarily one that's easy for us to manage.
But maybe it needs to change.
Perhaps it does. Put it anyway.
I agree with you, is my point. I agree with that statement.
I thought you were telling me to shut up.
No.
When you went to the conservation?
Yeah, it was in conservation.
Thank you.
I apologize.
It's quite all right.
About the water bikes, you know, the water going on...
I should have said...
I apologize. And they told me, I asked them why they hadn't met with the property owner where all this water is going before they send it into the state. He says, "I was ordered to send it into the state."
If you are available tomorrow before that meeting, I'd like to see the areas you're talking about. I could come and take some photos of it.
Sure.
Please, please, please...
It gets dark pretty early, though.
Please attend that meeting, because that's where, where they can do something.
Yeah.
And we've been increasingly frustrated with the meeting. That, that committee was designed to oversee the water, sewer, and highway, and yet we don't get water and sewer updates at the meetings typically, and that's frustrating. It's just, they seem to just run a highway, and we're trying to figure that whole thing out and make sure everyone understands how they're supposed to function down there, because of the meetings in general, I don't feel function the way they're intended to, and I don't think the committee's accomplishing what it's intended to.
I haven't even been able to get in one. I haven't even been able to meet the secretary down there. Never been.
Well, tomorrow night, 7 o'clock at the very latest, because the Water Commission's meeting generally is pretty brief, so...
Take a look into that, too. I mean, we can't be going on for the rest of my life with no water in Barry, and to water lawns and clean these troughs and sidewalks and mull off your neighbor's house. You know, it's, it's terrible.
Well, we've had a very dry summer, and some of the, the reason for limiting water consumption...
Have you read the sign? It's annual. It's a permanent sign.
Well, the problem is...
Two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday.
Then I would say to you, come this, at 6:30, for the Water Commissioners to hear their concerns relative to the need for another well in the town, in the town of Barry, and to try to find one that is up toward the center where we don't have the, to pump against a huge head of pressure. So I hear you, I, I understand it, you were frustrated, were frustrated. The most important thing is, is to continue to work with the, unfortunately, the way in which the, we are now structured by the government. It wasn't anybody's decision on this board, it just is the way it is, it's been for years now, I think since maybe the early 90s.
We got the inception date.
Yeah, almost 40 years, they tell me. So we'll see you tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah, you'll see me tomorrow night.
Great. You know where we, where we meet? We meet down at, we meet down at the DPW building?
The Highway Barn.
Go in, go in towards the office?
Yes.
And then where?
You'll find me.
On the left.
On the left.
Office is in the right, you turn left, or on the hall, there's a meeting room.
We'll make sure you, that we look for you, so that you can...
I'll be there.
Okay, thanks, Wayne.
And then if it's fine with you, I'll get your contact info from Jessica?
Yeah, he must, he must have his contact information, yeah.
I don't have an email for him, but I'll have to...
I'm sorry?
I don't know if emails for him might still be going to Dylan or something along those lines. I haven't seen it on our mailing list, but...
Yeah, I'll get in touch with you.
All right, moving on. Anybody else for public comment?
If in fact the gentleman's correct, that they did the work time and a half, a double time, I'm not sure exactly, because of the holidays.
Yeah, prevailing wage, yeah.
That's Chapter 90 funds. I don't believe you're allowed to pay. That's kind of what's, what I call misuse of public funds in that area. I think we need to pay attention to that, and the reason I'm here is because I heard he was coming, and I go to the planning board all the time and listen and learn and become educated, and there's always discussions about rules about the stone walls. It's always been a big deal. I hear people come up there asking for 20, 40 feet, and the planning board already gives them 30 feet, or 25, and they're very protective of the stone walls. Their stone walls going up and down that street, nobody gave a damn, and they're going to have to be fixed because our bylaws say we have to have approval from the planning board to break into stone walls. That entire road, which I believe is about at least three quarters of a mile, there's lots of stone walls, someone has to pay attention to it, we just can't blow it off because you're expecting citizens who the water, the, the DPW department is a citizen, people who live there are citizens, you're expecting outside citizens to follow the rules. You have, this town has to follow its own rules.
We agree.
Or else, all this Chapter 90 money is misuse of public money. And I don't want my money misused. And neither the community...
The Chapter 90 funds, Sam, the, the companies put in their bid prices what they call laid-in-place asphalt, so they have to give us a fixed price for what they will put the asphalt down in place for, and that's what we pay and approve to pave a road. If that company wants to come on a Sunday, that's their business. We pay the flat rate that's pre-approved in their state bid. We don't pay them...
In other words, what he said was incorrect.
Yes.
Yeah. There's no way we're paying anyone time and a half to pave a road, we're paying the, because we absolutely couldn't. We can only pay, we can only pay the rate that's approved.
The stone walls are very important. You drive up and down there, you'll see, and you'll see the drainage.
I think, I think we've discussed it at the wrong meeting long enough, so let's discuss it tomorrow night, okay?
I'm not going to be around, I have some personal issues, but I would love to be there.
Well, we would love to have you.
And I'm, and I'm not embarrassed, you probably figured that out.
I didn't expect you to be.
Okay.
Anyway, moving along, let's, can we get to some minutes at this point in September 26th executive session for approval but not released?
Actually, I believe those ones are...
Are you ready to release?
Yes, this is just for the new treasure collector.
Oh, this is just a new treasure collector one? So, okay, we're all set?
I was absent so long.
I would move to approve and release the minutes from the executive session on September 26th.
We have a motion to approve and release the executive session meeting for September 22nd. We have a second here.
Yeah, with you.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Sandy? We have one abstention. October 3rd, meeting minutes for approval?
Make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from October 3rd.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for the October 3rd meeting to, meeting minutes to be approved. Those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, approve the executive session minutes for approval but not release from October 3rd in regards to negotiation with Lieutenant.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the October 3rd meeting minutes of executive session, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's skip over the town administrative reports, select board reports, and correspondence to go to new business, since there is a group of individuals here to discuss with us the 9/11 memorial committee update, to give us information about their work to date and what's in the future going to happen. Dennis, are you the chair, so I give the floor to you?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for letting us come and meet. So the historical commission and historical society are here as well as the members, most members of the 9/11 memorial committee. Personally, I'd like to thank Jessica Sandy for all the work they've done thus by helping us. And a former assistant, Hayes Zukowski, who was instrumental in us acquiring the steel rails to begin with quite a few years ago. We require, I don't want to get into a whole lengthy story of the project. I'll just touch on some light things here. We acquired steel rails from the New York, New Jersey Port Authority that were from the rubble of the Twin Towers, which have been in storage down in the DPW building since that time. Through that time to now, we've gone through a pandemic and a lot of other things. We've had changes in our committee. Sadly, one member must have passed away, and we've had people move away, but we've had people backfill and are very involved now. We've been moving along quite well. The name of this memorial is called the Global War on Terror. Coincidentally, I saw on the news this morning, a bridge was named the Global War on Terror in Eastern Mass, and it was on Fox News this morning, which I thought was pretty good. So, since we started this project and through the pandemic, we've met quite a few times over the last few years. At this point, I'd like to ask who's a consultant for us and who's been very helpful from the get-go, Jason Benoit over there, our resident architect, engineer. And he's got a presentation to show, as well as some of the photos, Sandy was nice enough to put out for us, that Jason designed, he has up on here, so. Jason?
So it's like you said, Legion, for asking me to help to the worse cause? I'm sorry? So spoiler, this is the monument. Pretty straightforward, that's why I brought this with me. But I'm telling you, the pictures would be far better than describing. Guys, the Legion have done great diligence in measuring the distance of the other monuments from the central monument, trying to basically fit with the whole arrangement of the other monuments down there. And that includes the size of the monument that we've got. So I'm gonna turn on a couple of dimensions for us here, in case that's something that people care about. So they'll stand roughly about eight feet above this Pentagon base. This Pentagon base will be made of black pavers, I believe that, there we go. Okay, and people will be buying the bricks themselves to be, as donations to the cause.
How much do you think those will cost, Dennis?
What was the price for selling them? I forget what it is.
Oh, okay.
There's a website that has all that information, that we're going to link with the town, so that the monies from the pavers will go directly to our town fund. And then, once there's enough money in the fund, just like the library over there, they'll ship, they'll ship the pavers to us, and then they can be, they can start to implement them around the monument. It'll be an ongoing project, so there really won't be an end date to it, because there's going to be the sidewalk involved. We'll put blank ones in, and as people buy them, you can take the blank one out, put the written ones in. There are some stipulations on it, which are on the website, with regards to, this one here has the 9/11 logo on it. That's approved by the committee. The other logos will be the branches of service.
Oh, cool.
And that's it. So you're not gonna see Mickey Miles on here or Donald Duck.
Yeah, I understand.
That would be inappropriate. The language on it will obviously be, so that it's a loved one's name, maybe branch of service, when they served, things like that.
Will you, now, how many people, I'm sure there's a lot of people from the town of Barry probably somehow served in the global war on terror. Are their names gonna be somewhere?
Well, that's what these pavers will do, those names can get put on.
Well, I mean, but are we, as a community, going to say, you know, there were forty, three people, these are the people, and we get their names on? Or will it be just, if I have someone that I want to put on there, I do it by that?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to speak for these guys, but I do remember being part of that discussion in that because the war on terror played out the way that it did, it's very difficult to identify all the conflicts that may be related to the war on terror. And so you could omit somebody very easily, when did they move to town, all that sort of stuff. Makes it near impossible to treat it like something as definitive as the Civil War.
Okay.
Or a specific war, which I think you guys could appreciate.
Will there be any engraving about the purpose of the monument? Okay, so we'll know why it's there.
We're, yeah, absolutely. We're still in the process of deciding on whether to have bronze plaques put on it, have something engraved on the units themselves. That's still up in the air with us, we haven't.
That's why I didn't show it.
It's not tied in the pun etched in stone yet, so that's something we're deciding, because this isn't the exact final, but it's real close to it. Because I don't want to get ahead of it.
No, to Dennis's point, the things that are fixed here are what I'm showing. And the things that they are still deciding, we can add. And the benefit of having it as a 3D model is, you can actually see what it's gonna look like. In fact, the texture that you see on this stone was taken from the actual stone that was donated. I went and took a photograph of it, and I actually brought that texture in. So that's exactly what that stone looks like. That's the pattern of the stone itself that you're looking at.
Are those towers gonna wind up in the same orientation as the actual towers were?
Yeah, and they are to scale. The separation between them, the height, they're fourteen inches square. And the height is of the tower themselves. You see in the bottom right, it's basically six foot, eight and a half. And so if you wanted to do the math on it, so it's almost exactly proportional to the towers themselves. And as you can see, the orientation looking straight down is again, as the towers were. And so as we have options that we want to throw out for engraving in the stone itself, we'll make decisions. The stones, as far as I understand right now, are all gonna be similar to the base stone, which we have in our possession, which is a fire-treated stone, rough. And so if you're gonna put any engravings in the, in the towers themselves, it's not gonna be rough, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to smooth it out. So some artistic elements that are gonna be worked on and decided pretty soon. I, Dennis mentioned, I believe he mentioned the rail. There's a second rail that we have. And then there's a chunk of the Pentagon that they brought out a couple weeks back when we staked it out on the Common. They are interested in presenting as part of this monument. Do not have that finalized yet. I don't even, I haven't shown this to these guys, but in order to recognize that, I put this together quick this afternoon. Okay, and now this is by no means, this isn't anything that the guys have even seen. It was just my attempt to acknowledge that there's additional elements that are gonna be brought into the monument itself. They could end up on this podium here. I don't know if there's really enough room for that. I think it might be too crowded, which is why I created a separate piece. But just know, this is really quite open for discussion, and it will probably not look like this. But we are aware of the need.
Can I take a moment? Bill O'Donnell is online with us here. Bill, some of you in town know who Bill is. Bill was the one that was responsible for us acquiring an actual piece of the Pentagon outside of the building, the stone, the limestone, when the plane hit the building. Bill, did you want to talk about that for a second? I hope we can hear you.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
We can, the board anyways.
All right, yeah, so the piece of the limestone actually is part of the exterior of the Pentagon along the side that the plane crashed into, and was subsequently demolished. There's very few pieces left, and we were able to acquire one of those pieces for display in this memorial. It's on permanent loan to the town of Barry for displaying in this memorial.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill is being modest, he was there the day the plane hit. And we're very grateful to you, Bill. Jason?
To answer your question about the bricks, they're covered two different sizes, they're four by eight, those are gonna be fifty dollars. And the eight by eight is sixty-five dollars. You can also get a copy of it for your own personal, if on your manual or anything else, and that's twenty-five.
So I believe that you guys received a bunch of photographs there. So rather than me trying to explode this model up in the air, which I could do, but it just might take too long. You can see there that we potentially have the design. I'll take to make the hole, I'll deep to make the footings, so it doesn't settle. That location is a little bit lower than the sidewalks that are there, and that'll hold water in the spring. I think there's a picture of me.
Well, it holds a lot of water in the spring.
Yeah, I think it was seventeen on, on Spring Track, and there's a picture of me hydroplaying across that exact spot on the North Common in the Barry Gazette from thirty-six years ago.
Well, I mean, I would suspect that you have to logistically place it where it's not gonna sink.
That's why it's been moved three times.
Yeah.
So we're putting in footings. I told the guys to go five feet or bedrock. I know that there's a lot of bedrock out there on that side of the Common, I haven't dug a hole, but we'll find it, obviously, if we did, if we hit bedrock before we hit five feet, fine. Frost can go to five feet deep, and I know that that is very frost susceptible soil through there, it's not overly gravelly. And so we're gonna go either bedrock, we're gonna go five feet with five, and you'll see them in those photographs, five, five sawnage tubes, thank you. Four in the corners, one in the middle. It's a rebar in, the rebar will tie into the slab that we pour, which will be the support for the stone itself. And the sides will be two inch by whatever length it is of a facing, so two-inch thick tread style stone. And we'll join them together and cover them with those corner pieces. Zoom in here, I'll show you guys. So a lot of thought went into this. Michael, you know what I call him?
Michael Leonard.
Leonard, okay.
And Michael Woods here, too. We got two mics on this.
Hey. He's an amazing, this wonderful work. He put a lot of thought into this for you guys, to make sure that this is gonna be something that isn't gonna require a lot of maintenance, it's gonna stay together. Again, I put the details in those printouts. If you really want me to, I can start pulling the model apart, but I don't want to get too.
I would suspect you'll do borings before you finalize the place you're gonna put it, right?
We're, the place is fixed, as far as I understand. What we did was we centered it off of the middle here.
Well, what if you go in there and you go down and you're, you just, you know it's a swamp?
Well, we know that, based on what was done with the drainage on the other side, that it's classically six inches alone, thirty inches of top and subsoil, and then.
Ledge.
Either ledge, or it's what we call apparent material, you know, silty, whatever.
Well, we'll leave this to the experts then, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna.
Because you're gonna have to move it if you have to.
We're gonna go five feet down, if we hit like, which we're not gonna, you know, we'll rethink it at that time, but it's, it's more than reasonable presumption that you're gonna hit apparent, you know, over consolidated, you know, silty sand, and.
Lucy, you have some?
I just clarified, Jason, that is between the Civil War Monument and Exchange Street.
So let me back out, show this. Can you see it up there, Lucy?
Yeah.
Towards P and F, right?
Yeah, towards P and F, that's what I'm calling Exchange Street, yes.
All right, so looking, yep, so here is, 122 is here on the bottom, right?
Yeah.
Park Street's there, and P and F is here. So it is from the main monument, yeah, directly towards P and F. And you can see it there.
Halfway to the tree line.
That's where all the flags were.
That's where I'm at, yeah.
And so, and it's, so if you want, it's thirty feet off of the monument itself.
And how far is it from the, from the street, from Broad Street, from the fencing? Is it semi, is it?
It's a third.
I will tell you.
It's a third of the way.
About a third of the way.
If I go from the tip of the thing there to.
It's eighty-seven.
And there's gonna be a walkway with the bricks from the Civil War Memorial to that.
From what memorial?
For the walkway around the Civil War Memorial to the 9/11 Memorial, there's gonna be a walkway that connects it.
Okay, yeah, I didn't show the walkway, because I wasn't sure if we were, I wasn't sure if we were gonna do a walkway, since the other monuments didn't have walkways. And it gets to be kind of big and dominant, so I left it off, because I didn't know if it was fully decided.
The World War, pardon me, the World War II monument has a walkway to it. The Vietnam one has a walkway to it. The Brown Fountain has a walkway to it. We were originally gonna continue the one at the Brown Fountain out, but then it was too crowded. So Bob Bentley suggested that, hey, put it over there, play it so, it's starting to parent, ignore it, and anything else. We all met on the Common, looked at, thought it was a great idea.
So Dennis, would you say you want to come from this, this is where the walkway would go, right down the middle?
Yes, right down the middle to it.
So the Civil War Memorial is, hasn't gone anywhere in all those years, so.
No, it did, it did, because it cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to jack it up, because it sunk.
Well, that's a lot heavier.
Well, one thing, everything else up there, though, is stamped concrete for the walks.
Yes, yes.
So will we just stamp concrete?
No, those pavers.
They're gonna use the bricks.
That's why they're gray, because they match the color of the.
That's for the Pentagon perimeter.
Yeah.
The walkway from the wall, excuse me, the Civil War Memorial to this one, will be pavers as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Or, yeah.
I would stamp concrete and make it all the same, but what do I know?
They can't put names on them.
Yeah, that's, it's a funding thing and an opportunity, because I don't know how many, to that point, just to expand on this a little bit. What we did was we made this Pentagon that you're looking at, and you can see the dimensions of it here, eighteen feet from the base to the point, each side's eleven foot nine. That gives us four foot of passage, so for wheelchairers and such. The reason that this is showing up in the air, guys, six inches, is because of what we talked about before. If we have pouring water in there, we want, we don't want the monument to be under water.
Right.
And so we're raising the grade here at least six inches, maybe a little bit more. We're gonna shoot the grade, but it's not gonna be much.
Are you bringing the grass up to the edge, then, or are you leaving that six inches?
Yeah, we're, so, so imagine you've got like a dimple, right? We're gonna raise it, so that it doesn't pond water. And we're filling, right, six inches down to nothing, back towards the sidewalks.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
You just grade it back.
Yeah, we're shedding the water, we're raising it, and we're shedding the water back.
And then your sidewalk would come in at the same elevation as that, essentially, so you wouldn't be ramping up to that. That was another concern.
We're gonna level it with the brown, so that the molars can go across that wall. Get rid of the blades.
Yep, that's why I wanted to explain why it looks raised. That's because I want everybody to remember, we're bringing the grade up, so.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
I just didn't draw the rest in, because it would disguise that point.
Makes sense.
And you said four foot of clear space at the tightest point?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And, but, but we could make it bigger, is my point. Because we can count the number of bricks that are here, see what that gives us, see if that's gonna cover the number of people that we think that might be interested, plus the walkway. We could always make it a little bit bigger, but it needs to be, this is the minimum size that it needs to be.
I think just important, you know, as we've been looking at ADA compliance with a lot of our older things, especially if we're putting in something new, we just want to make sure we have that, you know, clear space of three feet around anything, have a ramp that's no more than, it wouldn't be more than seven percent on this. So I think that would be, that would be great to have a, but I think it is important to have a pathway to it. So I, I love that idea.
Yeah, I can, so I'm gonna draw all these things in, so that we can just update you. As with us, we, decisions are made. I can update it, I'll send you guys some pictures of it, so you can see.
What's your ETA? We'll be done.
This is, that's a question for that.
We're ready to break ground right now.
Well, it's probably not the right time of year, but I.
Well, break ground, yeah, then to get it forward, and then get the slab on top. I wanted to add, too, Jason, would you mind focusing on the base of the monument slab, like the sides, just for a second? We're also incorporating, originally, we had gotten from the people that demoed the Barry Wool building, quite a number of, and there's a picture in there, of quite a number of the granite sills for these huge windows that were there. And we got them down to the Barry DPW in hopes, originally, we were gonna use them as the towers, but we couldn't find any that would have worked. They were just such twists and turns to them, and it just didn't work out. But these guys come up with the idea, as the historical aspect of it, is to reuse some of those granite slat pillars from the Barry Wool in the base of this. So there'll be pieces of that around, let's, where the outside of, if I'm not mistaken.
The perimeter of the Pentagon.
Right, right where he was pointing.
You see right here, yeah, the, yeah, the bound, the edge, the edging.
That'll be Barry Wool granite.
The hope to separate the pavers from the lawn.
Yeah.
With the, with the salvaged granite from the Barry Wool.
Like the lintels from the windows, that's what they have down there, so.
I thought that was soup, lintel soup.
So assume you just have a company cut them down and square them up.
I think Michael was gonna volunteer that.
Yeah, Mike Leonard.
Mike Leonard, from the Legion, from Mason. Mike Leonard, from the, from the Legion, from Mason
Because
I know, right? That's pretty, that's pretty, pretty big.
That's pretty big.
The board decided
It's a task.
The historical aspect of those granite pieces, how many of these veterans' families worked there?
Some, for sure.
So, reutilize those things there, which I think is pretty cool.
And so Dennis is bringing up the many things that we want to do, and we also want to avoid overcrowding too much. So, one of the thoughts that we had was an interpretive sign that may be sort of outside of this a little bit, just to talk about some of these little details that went into it. Again, haven't totally decided, but that's probably the more appropriate thing than to try to label everything and just create too much
Busy.
Just, yeah, right. It should be a plain and simple statement, and so that interpretive sign is just a consideration.
And if you do have a walkway coming up to it, you might have that sign and the rail and the piece of the Pentagon along that walkway, sort of building it. And then if it is crowded, they can wait, because I'm sure on Memorial Day, there'd be a lot of people taking a walk, and it gives them something to do when they're waiting their turn to go up and, and look at the monument.
I, on the way here tonight, I downloaded something that'll allow me to take the model and then AR it on the common.
Oh, great.
So, I can take pictures, so we can come up, we can try that idea. I like that idea, by the way, and see, see if it looks good.
Yeah.
And so
So, we can, we can do a sort of a scale, so we make sure it doesn't dwarf
Exactly the scale.
So, it doesn't dwarf other things in the, on the, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the nice thing about these models, and I've done these, done these for the state, I've done it for years, is it kind of looks exactly like that when you're done. You're like, oh, wow, that looks exactly like it was supposed to.
Mm-hmm.
So, trying not to leave anything to the imagination, so, but I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't, I didn't get here in time to go over to the common to take photos of it, but I'll be able to do that for us with our updates. We'll be able to see it truly in place, if that helps everybody.
Do you, Lucy, have any other comments from Historical Commission? And I know that when we were contemplating a sign on the common, we had received some information from the commission and so forth regarding what kind of sign might be acceptable. So, I know that you people have looked at this and kind of thought it through.
First, I want to commend the nine eleven memorial committee because you've put so much thought into this, and the historical things, as you say, Dennis, are really just, the significance of the details is just really very heartwarming. And I think from a historical point of view, that's, that's wonderful. There are a couple of things I will comment on, and one is, yes, you bring up a very good point about ADA compliance, because we know that that will, grass walks to monuments will be an issue, so we probably do have to have some kind of meeting. My, my one thing, just for consistency with our other monuments, and I know it's hard to pinpoint all the names, but that's been an issue with our other memorials, and just a few years ago, we went back and had those plaques made around the base of the Civil War Monument, listing everybody's name. So, that was like an after the fact that had to be done. It's, we have that for the Korean and World War Two monument, World War Monument, One Monument, I believe the Vietnam era monument has had names added recently. I feel that we should have some way to acknowledge every person that we can on this monument, and, you know, the other people haven't had to pay to get their names put on there, so I, I don't, you know, I know there might be some concerns that it's not fair to have to pay sixty dollars for a brick when my grandfather got his name on the monument for free for World War Two or whatever. So, I think we need to, I think there are some options we could look at. This is just a suggestion, which is to have a website with a QR code or something that people can scan and go to a website that lists all the names that we can think of. That would be one idea I would add. And the same thing for an interpretive sign. There are some towns that are doing sort of, you, you have a code that you can tune in on your telephone, and you can do a guided tour around the common, for example, and you will actually hear a narrative of what the different monuments, who do it for all of them, are on the monument, their significance and their history. And rather than having physical signs, we could consider doing something of that and having the monuments, all of them, on websites so people can, can look at it. So, those would be my, my suggestions.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jason. That's wonderful to be able to see that 3D.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad it's helpful.
To address the part about the names and people having to buy it, part of why we're doing a fundraiser for people, there's, there's members in this community that have done doom purposes. Some of the firemen in town are chief over here is actually a veteran, a marine veteran, global war on terror. But there is firemen in town that are, who had served, and their names should be on that as well. We haven't ruled out having a thing with names on it. It hasn't been, I keep saying, that's been stolen. It's, I'm not trying to be a wise guy. The purpose of the paver bricks with the names and the fundraising aspect of it is to also help pay for bricks in that Pentagon area. That would be pretty much, and we're still in the process of doing this, determining whether that would be specifically for those people. And the other people, if they wanted to buy a brick with anybody's name on it, their loved ones, it, it wouldn't matter. The pavers going up to it could be anybody, you know, if they wanted to buy a paver with their name. It could be somebody that was in the service, you know, other than this, on that. The pavers around the Pentagon would be specific for that. We're still working on whether the funding aspect, so we can pay for all of that, which led me to another thing I didn't want to omit, and sadly, Steve left. But the fact that we had gotten a sizable donation from the Barry Charitable Foundation. We also submitted to the Tunnels to Towers. I don't know, most of us have heard of that. They donated to this, which they normally don't do that sort of thing, but they did. They liked the idea of what we were doing. And we also had a private donation of quite a bit of money from a local family in memory of their loved one. So, monies that we already have, and then monies we'll solicit, hopefully, to help pay for these things like Lucy mentioned. We didn't say it upfront, but she's absolutely right. I mean, all the other monuments have the names on them. Think, you think outside the box. If I was working in town, would I feel slighted if I wasn't on there when, you know, all the other guys were and women? And we're, we're hashing that out. We're, we're trying to figure out the best way. So, everything isn't etched in stone yet, again. But we're working on it and taking suggestions. You got Chuck back there. He's a global war on terror veteran, you know, and he's also a Vietnam veteran. There's, you know, it's, it's almost like you had your World War Two vets, I mean, your World War One vets, and there was a long gap between that and World War Two, but then you had World War Two in Korea, so the people would do dual. Some even did three, you know? So, we don't want to, we don't want to cause a problem or offend anybody, so we're open to suggestions, and we take that into consideration, so. I love the idea of that phone thing with coming on there. It reminds me of the Disney thing, where you would walk in and then the, the animatronics would tell you about it. That's a great idea to do that with a phone. It really is. It's almost, what do they call it, kiosks? That would be really something to be able to do something like that, the technology aspect of it, so. I'm wondering if anybody, I don't want to take your job.
No, I, I, I think that we probably have a pretty good idea of all the specifics. What's your estimate of how much it's going to cost soup to nuts?
Well, we've got, so far, it's been very good. That's another thing we need to talk about. The actual granite slab and the granite pillars, I think, the slab was donated, but that slab's over ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
It's behind the Historical Society right now.
Everybody wants to work there.
And that's the reason we want to get it on the commons or
Doesn't get broken.
Do it to the front end, nobody doesn't hit it, or a plow or someone back into it, and that, that'll be the end of it. Why we want to get it in the ground before winter.
It was donated by a company out of North Brookville, Stone and Line, who, he's pretty humble. He doesn't like publicity, and he asked the staff to say anything, but he's also donating to pillars, and, you know, he looked at a twenty thousand dollars worth of granite there.
You're looking at more than that.
More than happy to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, man.
But I didn't know if anybody else bought.
Well, just, I wonder, the nine eleven committee, the main purpose, we were here to get the approval from the board and influence the Historical Commission, influence the Historical Society, which is a separate, private, nonprofit in Barry, who sees chairman of the Historical Commission, sometimes oversees these monuments. So, really, we just need, or we'd like to get the approval of the board, especially where the location is, so that we could start the construction.
We'd like Lucy and her approval as well.
I, I don't know if either you, John, or Greg have had the opportunity to actually look at the location, or you're happy with the information that's been shared this evening?
I'm fine with what we've seen in the photos. I understand where it is, and I understand the water issue, and I'm not worried with the five footings they have. It's done by compressing weight of the soil, by the number of the mass, and it's, I'm sure it's all calculated. It's safe, and it's not going to sink, even if it's wet. So, I'm, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the calculations and work that's been done to, to shore up this spot and to, to make sure that this will be a, a great project. I'm, I can, yeah.
I hear
I like what we see.
I hear a motion?
Yeah, second?
I did, I, I would move that we approve the location in the beginning of the project.
And, and they, just for information, the location that we're talking about is the one in which Jason is giving us information tonight, right?
Yeah.
So, we're on the same page?
It's yellow caution tape where it is. It's marked out on the common now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like a unanimous vote. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank everyone once again for all the work.
Clearly enhanced the common.
Clearly, there's been a lot of work put into this. Really, I do appreciate it.
Yeah, these guys are busy.
I'm wondering, well, they got footings. Oh, great. Are they tied together? Oh, they are tied together, because I'm hoping the slab wasn't going to just sit there. It's like, whoa, whoa.
That's why they, that's why they asked an engineer to help.
That's good.
The drainage is considered, and the, and the water runoff and drip edge is considered. There's a, there's a lot of thought into the design.
Detail, a lot of details matter, right?
Like, like to see it.
Thank you all.
Wherever the state, I'm very familiar with building really expensive things that happen to be two inches under water. I don't like getting embarrassed.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time. Moving on, can we go now back to Town Administrator Report, please?
For sure.
We'll send updates.
Okay, thanks so much.
Awesome.
If you have any questions about Route 122 or state votes?
I, I probably do. I'll call you. Okay, go ahead.
I would move that we would just go ahead to the winter market aspect for the request to use town property.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have somebody for that? Okay, I'm sorry. We won't make you, we won't make you Okay, so
Now, we have to thumb through all these pages.
Request for, to use town property. The one that you're interested in is item five, which is called Winter Market. I know that you had that last year, and we did approve it. That was sort of scheduled around the other Barry kind of holiday events, okay? So, any concerns from the board regarding that, which was here, yes, last year? You expect any changes and
I don't expect any changes. I'm basically just here to confirm the dates are still available, and last year I was never charged, so it was a question on the fee for the hall. I don't know if you're
The reason, the reason that we had a discussion about that was because it was a new, you know, thing, and it was an extension of the farmer's market, we thought and hoped, and thought that we would see how it would go.
Right.
And so, if you're back here again this year, I guess it went pretty well.
I think so.
You think so, okay.
I was gonna say, it must have gone well. If they want to do it again, that's, we're wondering, we're wondering how it's going to turn out.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve use of town property for the Barry Winter Market as listed here.
Uh, any fee? With fee or no fee?
Last year, you guys granted that I would, I maintained the building.
Right.
I cleaned up and I swept up, so you wouldn't have to
I, I, I think, I will add without any fee, as it is for the good of the, the town, and the people like it, so it's, it's really benefiting everyone at the market, so.
And that you would continue to do the basic custodial needs?
Correct, yes.
That's fine.
Sleeping, removing trash.
You have a second for that?
I have a second.
We have a motion made and seconded, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with, looks like you're unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Sorry for, sorry for the wait.
No, I appreciate it.
Why don't we finish that, why don't we just finish the request for town property while we're there? Our Circle of Song, that is a, a group that has basically done that almost every year. Quabin Community Band, again, that is something that pretty much has been on and off. The Cheer Club that is actually
That's the haunted house.
The haunted house, and that's been done before. And Insight Meditation Society, their request.
And these dates are all been vetted, Sandy, for future one? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Circle of Song use of town hall. Are the dates listed?
There are a lot of dates. Thursday, January nineteenth through Thursday, May eighteenth, on, on Thursdays, and then there's a concert on May twentieth.
Hence why I said for the dates listed.
Lots of them.
Yes, I understand there's lots of them, and that, these will be posted, so people can see them online without us tying the meeting up on those specifics.
We have a ma, a motion made
Second.
And seconded for Circle of Song use of the town hall. Those in favor?
Aye.
Quabin Community Band, their request?
Make a motion, approve the Quabin Community Band use of the town hall once again, and the Center Common and the South Berry Common for their, their listed events.
Second?
We have a motion made and seconded for the Community Band, Quabin Community Band, for utilization of areas of the town. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Quabin Regional School District Cheering Club for their haunted house, which I imagine is on the thirty-first?
Yes.
And that has been done in the past, but not during COVID, so they're reestablishing that fundraiser. And our people would be charged an amount, I don't know if it's three dollars, five dollars per, per person or per family to go into the haunted house, so there is a charge.
And this is done by the Cheer Club and the school club?
Yes, it is.
Okay, make a motion, approve the use of town property for the Cheer Club and waiving the fees.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Insight Meditation Society?
I'll make a motion, approve the use of the town hall for insight meditation on the dates they have listed. I'd be so as to like to come and then allow them in early to set up if that can be arranged.
Okay.
We have a mo, ma, a motion made. Any second?
Uh, yes, I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded for the Insight Meditation Society to utilize town property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Winter Market, we just took care of previous to this, so I think we are ready to go back to the Town Administrator Report.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I wanted to give an update on our cable access projects. DG Matrix, which is the, the Spring Hill Road project, we have received our assessment from Verizon and are waiting for the assessment for National Grid. Once both of those assessments are taken care of, and the licenses are in hand with DG Matrix, they will be able to run the fiber lines quickly. Chris Lynch, who is our representative on this project, he said that they do have the fiber on hand, so all we are waiting for is an assessment from National Grid, which is just going through their bureaucracy right now. We did submit the payment for the Verizon assessment today, so we're moving about as fast as we can right now on that project. And we don't, we don't know when to expect the assessment from National Grid, but but once we do get that, like I said, it should be short order before all of the fiber lines are run up in that area and those residents can have access to.
Is that, is that an assessment the pound, town's gonna pay?
Yes.
Do you have any idea what that assessment would be?
No, I do not. I, I believe our assessment from Verizon came in a lot lower than they projected, but I can't, we can't compare Verizon to, to National Grid and what they are expected to assess, and the Verizon's assessment was around twenty seven hundred dollars, so.
And that's because it's dual ownership of the poles, Verizon owns some and, and National Grid owns the others.
Right, but I don't think Verizon's, Verizon's assessment is gonna be indicative of what National Grid might come up with.
I don't know the percentage of ownership, though.
Right.
I get the impression that National Grid owns more, I don't know that.
I would.
It's gotta reflect that if, if thirty percent's owned by Verizon, then we can expect about two and a third times that fee.
Right.
Next time, but.
And some information that will be forthcoming.
Yes, Charter, the, I did finally get a, a response from the Director of Government Affairs, who is work, who is the authority that provides us with a quote for the rest of the unserved areas of town. And in, in the time since we had our last proposal and now we have changed reps with Charter, so the, the legacy that we had as far as, you know, the information that they gathered from us and everything.
They don't have anymore?
They do not have anymore, so I am restarting the conversations and sending in all of the information. The Director of Government Affairs is the director for the whole state, so, so obviously, as a lot of projects.
What is his or her name?
John.
John?
John, John Maher, M A H E R. So I talked to him briefly through email on Friday saying that we have about sixty residents that have identified they are interested in cable or internet access and that spans about twelve roads, so just kind of restarting those conversations and I hope to hear back from them soon.
So do we have to collect data again to update it?
Um, we can look at collecting data again. I think there's something that's coming up a little bit later and on the agenda here. We do have a cable access survey that Joshua Smith from the, the Cable Committee would like the select board's approval and sending out. So I, I wanna say one of the questions on that cable access survey is to, to see if there's anybody in town that would like cable or internet that are not currently served.
How do, how will you get this cable access survey out to the public?
So it is in a Google form, so we will heavily rely on the internet to get the survey out, whether that's.
That's great for people who can't, don't have internet, but whatever.
So for those situations, we can easily, I've done it in the past, have printed copies that are available at the library at the senior center and at the, usually we will have a couple of copies at the collector's office because that's where we get some foot traffic.
I mean, we know some of the streets, so we may be able to just do some phoning and say to people, do it at work.
Be nice if those surveys were available at polling places.
Any other, yeah.
Most people that, you know.
Okay, I don't, I don't know if that's legal, but.
It's, it's not, it's, it's not, it's not advertising for, for the elections. It's not, you know, you can't, you can't campaign within so many feet. Jim, any, any idea on that? No restriction, I'm just giving out flyers, is there having them available?
Yeah, I, I check with Ellen.
I would think we can leave, make flyers available for people as long as they're not politically charged or anything to do with the elections.
Nowadays. Yeah, I will definitely check with Ellen this week to see what her, what her input on that is.
Beginning the early voting, so good chance you get them up.
Yes, on.
Town hall available.
On Saturday, which is also coming up.
Over the Henry Wood Building, though.
In the, yep. As far as the fire station updates go, I have a meeting planned with the fire chief next week to attend a webinar on federal grants through the USDA on October twenty seventh, which is next week. This, the goal through this webinar will be to learn a bit more about the different funding avenues that we have, because we will, there really will not be any other way for us to fund this project other than through USDA as our, our loan servicer. So whether that is combined with grants or some other level of funding, the USDA will be the loan servicer for this project. Last week, I also attended an MMA legislative meeting and a Division of Local Services Municipal Law Seminar and both of these, both, both of these events touched upon the new infrastructure bill that is, that will provide funding for municipal buildings. They recognize kind of how, like how the schools have the MSBA. Municipal buildings have a, a critical need for that same type of funding avenue and kind of regulatory, regulatory body that does some type of approving of projects. There, there are minimal details on that at this point just because the infrastructure bill is still, every, all, everybody's still working on all the details with this bill, but the legislators that was able to talk to recognize the need for the investment in these areas as well as the incredibly unpredictable costs associated with building right now. They, they gave many examples of how buildings are going many millions of dollars over budget. They have one, the DOR touched on one building in Eastern Mass that went thirty two million, is currently thirty two million dollars over budget. And that is not because they were making any expansions, that was just due to the volatility of the market. So there are a lot of challenges coming down that way. For the FY twenty four budget, last week I met with the Finance Committee to kick off the FY twenty four budget season. We're doing this a little earlier than normal just because of how my vacation fell this year and I would rather have this letter get out to the department heads earlier. And this year, I am asking each department head to sign and return the budget directive to my office to acknowledge the expectations as well as the meeting calendar. We just, every department gets the same letter, but the.
Response is different.
The response is very different across a lot of the departments. So I'm, I'm just hoping to have a little bit, a little bit more accountability on that end for this year. So essentially, I'll send out the budget directive this week and the departments have until next Thursday to sign and return it to me. And then their budgets are not due until January twelfth or thirteenth.
And we know that the new governor will have extra time to produce his or her budget, so we're gonna be running late the whole season. I mean, not because of anything other than she won't be House One, House Two. She's gonna be.
That's interesting.
Well, it could be into February before she, he, whatever, produces the budget.
I have not thought of that. I haven't thought of it that way. That is interesting on how the, the governor taking over in January.
Slows it all down.
Slow, sure, well, we haven't seen something like this in eight years.
That's, that's right, that's right.
Speaking of elections, the twenty twenty two general midterm election is Tuesday, November eighth. Early voting in person starts on this Saturday, October twenty second and goes through Friday, November fourth. The hours will be posted on the website and on Facebook, probably tomorrow. And because it's not every single day that they have early voting hours, it's different based off of the requirements of the state, but there's also early mail-in voting that is currently going on. So again, just like we had in the primary election, multiple avenues on how to vote and multiple opportunities to get your, your vote in. And a couple, a couple more things. We have the police union president approached me last week with a request to negotiate their next contract and based off of some scheduling between myself and the police union president, we expect to start the negotiations in late November. And also on the agenda tonight is a request that I, a member of the select board is appointed to negotiate that contract with myself and Chief Saboran. And lastly, I have scheduled a performance evaluation training for mid-December. All department heads with responsibility for evaluating. Employees will be required to attend and I will also open up the training to boards and committees who have evaluatory responsibilities. I think that's, I think one of the challenges is that you can't just do an evaluation without having prior training on how to do an evaluation, because a lot of times, from what I've seen in, you know, seeing what has been done in the past in this community is that the, the feedback that comes from an evaluation is less than helpful or effective. So I've contracted with our insurance company to offer this free, this training free to the town and free to our employees, so we're looking for that.
With this workshop or whatever be required?
For the department heads, yes. I can't, I can't require boards and committees to attend, but I can strongly suggest. I don't have that kind of power. And that is all I have for tonight.
No correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, select board reports?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Well, one thing Jessica, I mentioned to you was the phone pronouncing Barry wrong. I know you said you found a way that we could fix that, is there a timeline on that?
Um, the timeline is gonna be tough because I still have to even learn how to do it and I don't know what that entails and it's just, the timeline is really tough right now because my schedule is packed with everything I need to accomplish before I go on vacation. So I don't know if I will personally be able to do it and it's something that I can look at delegating to another employee.
Do you have a quick comment?
Yes, if I may. I would think that when this town made a commitment with this organization to change the systems, there would be an expectation, a general common sense expectation that they would pronounce our name correctly. And it's, you know, I know other, other entities do this. I know Marriott Express does this, I know Home Depot does it, I know Amazon does it and I know All Around that does it. It's just changing the digital language to a regular language that everybody understands. And I listened to the, the words when I called the town, this town office and the quantity of words is so little that I'm even guessing one might be able to do with a real human voice.
That's a way we're gonna have to do it.
That's what we're planning to do, so it's gonna be a full recording of a person, which will be more, more welcoming and more accurate.
Yeah. Because I listened to the time that this dissertation was, push one, push two, push three, push four, and then I compared it with the time that we used to have.
Well, we're, I think we can move on, we, we've got a.
So anyway, anyway, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thanks.
The other topic, the Master Plan Steering Committee did meet for the first time and we're planning to meet the third, Thursdays of each month going forward. We're also discussing possibly bringing in a student representative from the high school to sit on the board. I think we're going to, to more formalize that, but we might wanna put a listing out or talk to the school in some way about getting a student voice.
I know that Mark Brophy has talked with me about potentially being an appointed member. He's the chairman of the school committee. So that's up to whether we appoint or.
Yes, this board appoints.
I don't know how many people already.
I can put that on the next agenda. We do need more members, probably about four more members on the, on the.
Master Plan Steering.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, John?
Uh, no, that's all I have.
Greg?
I would just like to address something I did several years ago, which was received poorly, but we'll try this again. Given the current rate of inflation for people, I suggested in the past that we find a way to take tired persons in town and freeze their tax rates so that they don't have increasing expenses on the town's behalf as they are trying to live off of their fixed income in their retirement. And this is done in many communities and what you do is, you know, as the rates would go up, that increment is put aside as a lien against the property. And then in the future, when they sell the home and they pass away and it's inherited, whenever the home is finally changed over in title or indeed, then that money is, is held up as a lien and we're compensated then. So it's not like we're talking ten percent of our town's gonna stop paying taxes. We're talking about eliminating the increase in taxes to a portion of the people in town. Yes, it makes initially, when you start, some budgeting issues, but not as big, I think, as the impact they tried to make it out to be. And these monies do come back. Some people who retire, some stay here, some move away to someplace warmer. Some will still sell their house and go to a senior.
So it wouldn't matter how much your retirement income was, or was anybody who was retired?
And I would make it available to anyone who's retired, that they can freeze their.
She's, that's you and me, Stan.
You know, but.
I thought you were talking to the chief.
No, you and me, we're retired reason here.
Oh, you're not talking about, I'm not retired.
Oh.
It will, it will freeze that rate to whatever it is today, so it's not like you're not paying taxes. You're just not gonna increase their burden, especially, there's so much going on in inflation and it's something small the town can do for its senior residents. I mean, I watched this happen in Groton when I grew up and so many people lost their homes as, especially as the town grew and prices went up and we just, we're going through this escalation in home values. Somebody who has a, a home that might have been valued a hundred thousand could in a few short years find it's worth four hundred thousand in this town and they can't even begin to afford the taxes for it. And I want to prevent people having to make a choice between paying a tax bill and buying medications or food or heat and also between them, prevent them from being taxed out of their home if they've lived there all these years and retired. I, I don't think they should have to leave for tax purposes and. We get the money later, but.
Well, I think one of the challenges is that our tax rate has gone down in the past two years and it's the assessment of the homes that go up. So if we're freezing their tax rate, then they could actually.
We're freezing their tax payment.
Well, I would be opposed to this without a very serious review by people with a lot of financial acumen, because this seems on its face, no big deal, but it is a big deal. And it is a big deal for all of the other services and so forth that are offered within our community. We also need to look at the demographics of our community. Do you know that they own, the biggest demographic in, in Barry that continues to grow is the over sixty crowd? So you can't just think that this, I mean, I, I wish we could just take and say, oh, that'd be a great idea, let's do that. But it is not a great idea for the community unless it is very thoughtfully evaluated.
Absolutely.
And I certainly, off the top of my head, would say, no way would I move forward with anything like this without a substantial economic review.
We need to review certainly, to begin with, how many people this has got to impact and what, what the financial impact would be to the town. And currently, our tax rate is down and we haven't hit our prop two and a half in years because we haven't needed to. And this is something the whole town would vote on. It may mean we, we are a tenth to two tenths higher on our tax rate to allow our, our seniors and other people in town to stay here. It's, it goes to a town, it's our decision, this goes to a town vote in the long run.
But, but certainly.
But it's done in other towns and I agree, there's a lot of work to do.
I don't know if it's done in other towns and if it is, I'd like to know which towns are doing it. Harvard, okay, Harvard. How is per capita income in the Commonwealth?
I, wow. I know for what, no, but not everyone in Harvard. There are people in Harvard that have owned their homes, just like in Groton, that's part of why they have been lost.
Well, you, you can't convince me in just a, it would have to be something that is very clearly. Well, you, you can't convince me in just a, it would have to be something that is very clearly evaluated. Not only finding anybody and everybody, but if my W two is such that I don't really need you to not, not, I don't...
Then why would you elect to do it? You just putting a lien against your house?
Yeah, but you and I both know that there'd be a lot of people who would say, "This is good for me," and not necessarily good for the town, but I don't really care. It's good for me. My concern is that this is kind of off the cuff and not really a responsible recommendation without gathering a lot of data on it.
I didn't say we shouldn't gather data, but I feel strongly about giving people the chance to make sure they can stay in their home and not be taxed out of it.
I think it's, it's worth looking into. I, I think, you know, step one, make sure this is something that the state would allow the town to do. Make sure that we've verified how this has gone in other, you know, municipalities that have tried it. Talk to, you know, members of those select boards, or, you know, financial boards in those communities as well. You know, I think there's, there's definitely some, some potential benefits to it, but I think there's a lot of research and work that we need to do to, to understand what it is and make sure, most importantly, that we can, and that, what it would...
My, my, my concern is, and I know I probably whined about this way too many times, is we are in negative free cash. We have not a very healthy, but it's stabilization of about, what, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That's it.
Well, we rated that pretty heavily at town meetings, so...
No, we didn't. We didn't touch stabilization.
Um, we, yeah, we touched a, um, we touched a separate stabilization. It wasn't our general...
Not the stabilization account that we continue to try to bring, bring up. But I mean, we're in negative free cash. We have not a decent audit in, what, at least three years. We have a fired station we're absolutely in desperate need of. And my concern is, not only do we have to get all the data, but we have to say, "Where is our town going? How are we going to bring the community the services that it needs?" Because we have, I mean, you look at the number of hospital runs we have, and the, and the age of our, our residents is not on the young side, it's on the older side. And so my concern is, it would be wonderful to just say, "Yeah, that makes like a great idea." Everybody would be happy, but it may make no sense at all for a community in our particular financial situation. We're not rolling in dough here.
On a hundred thousand dollar home, someone's tax bill can go up by, what, twenty-five dollars in a year? A two and a half percent increase?
No.
No. It can go up to a max of twenty-five.
It can go up by 2.5% maximum of what they're paying.
Well, depending on, depending on what their valuation is, their assessed valuation, which may change if somebody added a, a, a new kitchen on, or whatever.
Right, yeah, there's a lot of factors that go into...
I mean, there's so many factors that go into what my tax bill is going to be.
Right, so if you decided to put on an addition to your house, your tax bill would go up far more than twenty-five dollars per one thousand.
But like, and obviously if someone puts an addition on their house, that's a revaluation they're gonna have to take.
Yeah.
But in general, I think if someone sees their tax bill go up generally, you know, sixty or eighty dollars in a year is probably a normal, you know, rate of increase. And if someone was retired and the typical age after retirement was to live ten more years, then we've forgiven six hundred dollars until they pass away, then we get the six hundred dollars back. We're not talking about setting aside twenty million dollars in revenues or something silly here. And that's why I'm saying...
But we don't know.
We don't know until we pursue it, but I, I think you'll find, it's, it's not as crazy as you think, but it does make a difference in their pocket, especially over several years.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think anyone in this room would say, "We wouldn't like to help the people who need help." But what we really need to make sure is that we don't do something that is, makes a sense for a very small number of people and makes a colossal mess for all the rest of it. So I'm, I'm of a mind that if we wanna investigate into this, we should do so in, with care and concern for the future of the community, as well as future of individuals within the community.
I strongly am opposed and offended at the term colossal mess before we've looked into it, to make such a statement, and paints it so negatively. It's a good idea, and we've agreed it looks, takes looking into. But to, you know, advertise it on there as a colossal mess, I think is...
I, I said it could be a colossal mess without us doing all of the due diligence that's required.
We don't know what we'll be until we look into it, is my point. It could, it could be anything.
So...
And due diligence is the key term.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So it appears that Harvard's program is actually a donation program, and it's a fund that is established to provide tax assistance to elderly or disabled.
You mean, people, people...
So people donate money to offset all these folks' taxes. Again, they do have to submit an application. And it's basically a tax aid grant. And not necessarily anything that the town absorbs.
Right.
Is that something that's changed in recent years?
Um, this is as, yeah...
A few years ago, they did that.
This, this is as recent as, it's listed as FY twenty-three, so the current tax year?
Right, I'm saying if you go back eight years, is that the case, that they got away from that to this?
Right, it could be. I don't know. I'm just going based off of a quick...
All right. It, it will take looking into.
Well, if we're, if we're gonna do, do this seriously, and if you're gonna do due diligence, we need to vote that we're really gonna do it. Otherwise, what will happen is, it'll fall away to, "Well, well, we talked about it, but we didn't take any action." If we're gonna take action on this, it's gonna mean, it's gonna cost us a little bit of money and a little bit of leg time to do it. There's no question about it.
Well, a vote would be inappropriate tonight, because it's just a select and report. It's not on the agenda. We have no input.
Okay.
But I would suggest maybe it goes on the agenda for the next meeting. We can, you know, kick it around a little ourselves and bring more information, and give the public a chance to come in and have comment on it. And then we might take a vote at a meeting when it's listed on the agenda before that.
Well, I, to, to have the public take a vote on it before they know what it means...
No, have them come in and be in the conversation, so we can have it. If we're gonna vote to pursue it, at least we can hear the input from, from anybody that wants to have some input before we start looking into it. But it's, there's absolutely no commitment until we find what's going on, if it's doable. That's all.
That's all you got?
That's it.
I don't have anything other than things that we are probably gonna be spending more time at the DPW meeting discussing, so...
Well, I'm sure that would be on the meeting.
Moving, moving along, the election warrant, early voting hours and so forth?
Yes, that should be in your...
We have the election warrant.
And then the hours, I believe, are both beneath that.
This must be the election...
The election rate number.
I don't have the hours during... I thought it was with that, it's not. Okay.
I missed mine last time through, but we'll find it this time.
It should have...
Does it look like, oh, oh, got it.
Yeah, there it is.
Got it. Yeah, got it. Yeah.
Right, we all shuffle through everything and mess them all up, because we take things out of order and get things back in their own method.
Well, I mean, I think these are all, you know, according to statutes, so...
Yes, yeah, by the size of our community, we are required to have so many hours at a minimum open for in-person early voting. This, as I said earlier, Saturday, October twenty-second, is the first day to vote in person. And Saturday, October twenty-ninth, which is next Saturday, is the last day and time to register to vote or change your party for the November eighth election.
Okay, and the actual state election warrant, do we need to vote or just approve it or vote to post it? What do we do with that?
Vote to accept it. And then there are the, the hard copies in the folders for everybody to sign.
I would make a motion that we accept the Commonwealth Massachusetts State Election warrant as, as listed here for us.
Second?
We have a motion made and seconded regarding the state election warrant. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we establish and approve the early voting dates for November eighth, twenty twenty-two state election in-person early voting schedule, which will be posted online, but to cover most of them here at the Henry Woods Building at forty West Street. Will be on Saturday, October twenty-second, from eight till noon. Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, from nine AM to four PM. Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, from nine AM to four PM. Thursday, October twenty-seventh, from nine AM to four PM. And Saturday, October ninth, from nine AM to...
Twenty-ninth.
Uh, pardon me, thank you, the twenty-ninth, from nine AM to five PM, which will also be the last day to register or change your voting party. Tuesday, November first, nine AM to four PM. Wednesday, November second, nine AM to four PM. Thursday, November third, nine AM to four PM. And Friday, November fourth, nine AM till twelve noon.
Second?
We had a motion made and seconded to approve the early voting schedule as read into the record. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have some resignations and some appointments. Jessica, can you just walk us through resignation Roger Courier from what, what, is that council on aging?
Yes, so everything that we have in front of us are, yes, council on aging. We received two resignations, Roger Courier and Dee Dee Charlton. And they had two residents who were interested in filling those slots, so we have an appointment of...
Now, now, does this council on aging sort of do some effort outreach to let people know that they're open positions? How do they do that?
Um, it's, my understanding is that they actually have like a list of people that accumulates over time. So these people, my understanding, they've been on a waiting list to be appointed to the council on aging. And they oftentimes have more people who wanna be appointed than open slots. So...
Is there a reason this is handled differently than other boards or commissions?
How, how so?
Where, where there's a waiting list to get on and then you can select on that?
Because people are interested in being on.
Yeah, I guess people are interested, more interested on being on the council on aging. They are governed, they are governed by a separate bylaw.
By the federal government.
Right. I don't know if it's the federal government that sets their regulations, but there, there's, it's kind of like how the library, the trustees, and there is state funding that is relying on the trustees to be operating. It's very similar with the council on aging, is that we have state funding that is reliant on us having an operational council on aging with bylaws that govern how they go about appointments. So the council on aging, they have people who are interested in being appointed, and then at their meeting, they make a recommendation to the select board on who they would like to be appointed to, to the council.
We, we still technically make the appointments, and we can choose someone else if we wanted to, but this is what that board does and committees, so we generally honor what they, what they ask for.
Just seems odd to not publicly post, especially where it is governed by additional statewide rules. Are we, how confident are we that this is the appropriate way to do this? I guess is my question.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with it, because this, this, you know, the people that show interest in this board are the ones who will be involved in it. And, and the ones that are recommending are other people that are involved in it. You know, we can appoint, this isn't like a job posting. We can appoint anyone that asks. You know, we could say, "You know, we're just gonna appoint Sandy today instead, get someone in there that's gonna come back to us." But you know, if Sandy has no interest in doing it, why wouldn't we? And if it's a job, it's a different thing. We have rules to follow. We have policies. We generally do two-week posting internally to allow for, you know, promotion within the town before we outside advertise. But we certainly are obligated to advertise and meet the qualifications.
Right, that's for job postings. That's not what we're talking about.
But for these, we don't have such restrictions. It's, we, we simply fill any postings by appointment in, in the intro. So even in elected position, we can post, we can appoint until the next election.
Which we should be doing in any situation, making... So this, my, I guess my problem with this is, we just found out that people have resigned. The public had never had a chance to know that, so no one could have applied to take this position.
Well, I'm certainly, we could certainly tonight just, you know, approve the resignations for Roger Courier and Dee Dee Charlton, and have an opportunity to have a conversation, perhaps you, with the council on aging chairperson, and to find out the situation and make certain that these are two people who have made, and if, and there's transparency, are, are there other people who made application or not?
We can invite the council to our next meeting. They've, they've, they've come in the past.
Yeah, sure.
They usually seem happy to come and talk about things.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to understand the, the process and how they...
Why don't I make a motion to accept the resignations of Dee Dee Charlton and Roger Courier?
Second?
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the resignation or accept the resignations with regret of Roger Courier and Dee Dee Charlton from the council on aging. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to thank them for their, the time they've put into it, and what they've done.
Absolutely. And I'd make a motion that we table these other recommendations until such a time as we have our next board meeting, and invite the council to that meeting.
We have a second for that?
Second?
We have a motion made and seconded to invite the council on aging to our next board meeting for the purposes of discussing appointments. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like...
While we're on boards and committees, real quick, if we could also, where we discussed earlier the master plan steering committee and that there are openings on that, if we could, I'd, I'd move to post that there are openings on that publicly?
Yeah, that was one of the challenges that I had initially, even getting anybody to, because right now, it's not public. Like, we don't have openings for just general residents. We need people with specific representation, whether it's on the school board or, I know the conservation commission already has a representative, but, you know, folks that have specific, um...
Planning.
Niche, niches, yes, yeah.
Second the motion to post.
Checking the motion to what, I'm sorry?
To post.
To post.
To post the openings and requirements for each of those votes.
We have a, a motion made and seconded to post those individual, for positions that are still necessary for the master plan steering committee. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John made a motion that we, that we post, that there's open positions to that committee.
Technically, we're under...
Then we get into some discussion prior to the second, so I seconded at the conclusion of the discussion, and then we voted. We discussed before the second instead of after. John's motion, my second.
I'm sorry?
Back up to the cable.
And our apologies.
I thought we already did this.
That would have been in order, but...
No, we didn't do the electricity contract or the cable access survey.
Yeah, we did. We talked about the cable.
We didn't go over it.
We talked roughly. I talked a little bit about it in my report, but we didn't go over it in a lot of detail.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if we need to, but...
Yeah, I don't know if we need to at this time.
Can you approve a survey or even one of those lines?
I think that was, Joshua's intention was to get an approval, and I am reviewing the questions right now. And this would be able to capture folks who do not currently have these services. If, if, you know, just another avenue to capture that data.
I'd make a motion, we approved the Barry Cable Access Survey, and if said by Ellen that it's appropriate, make sure these are available during in-person voting.
All right, second? As far as discussion goes, I am still quickly reading through them to make sure.
Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
We have a motion made. John seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded to approve the Barry Cable Access Survey as presented by Joshua Smith regarding cable access in the, in the Barry community. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, oh, they have electricity contract. I believe we have the document that summarizes...
Yes, I wasn't able to provide this to you on Friday or before the weekend, because essentially, electricity rates right now are so volatile that even the rates that are in front of you cannot be guaranteed. And after our discussion tonight, I will have to go back to our broker and have a conversation in, in the morning to see if they've fluctuated, which they probably have. I guess recently, they have been a little bit more tame as far as looking for entering into an electricity contract. So essentially, the reason why this is coming up now is if you see at the top of the Excel spreadsheet, it shows that our current rate is eight point nine cents per kilowatt hour. And it shows basically our annual kilowatt hour usage, as well as what our approximate annual budget is for that. And the issue is that I recently found out that the public safety bu- building has never been included in the electricity rate contract. So we've been paying market rate for our public safety building since it opened back in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. So we've been paying market rate for our, um, public safety building since it opened back in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, um, which is a huge issue because that building uses up a considerable amount of electricity and costs us a lot of money every month. And, um, so when I approached our broker about this issue, they said that, um, they have a new contract with the MMA, which is where this is brokered through. And that contract allows us to add buildings at no impact to our current rate. And the, but the only way we would be able to get that benefit is if we agree to a contract extension in FY twenty-four, which would go into effect November of twenty twenty-three. And those rates are in front of you right now, so we have, um, a one-year contract, um, a two-year contract, a two-year and one-month contract, a three-year contract, and then a three-year and one-month contract. Um, I, at this point, with how, how high the rates are, I don't think I would recommend going any more than one, a one-year contract, um.
How much is the one-year contract?
The one-year contract is sixteen, uh.
Point one six seven.
Sixteen point eight cents a kilowatt.
Yes, per kilowatt. So essentially almost doubling the rates that we have now. Uh, again, this is something that we would have to budget for in FY twenty-four, so the upcoming year, and that would have about a ninety-six thousand dollar impact to our budget. Um, but it would save us considerably for the next year because in November, the anticipated electricity rate for the public safety building is gonna go up to thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour. In a building that we use about fifteen thousand kilowatts per month.
We have.
Per month, you said?
In the winter, very high.
So do you take a fourth of that for the next year?
No, so we've had some conversation with some commercial, um, solar types?
Yes, we have had, um, I've, I've had conversations about putting, um, solar carports at the, um, public safety building and we would look at about fifty thousand dollars for that project, um.
That includes the panels?
Yes. That was just based off of one conversation that I had with a commercial business in the Pioneer Valley. Um, and then they said about if we were to put just roof mountain solar, it would be about twenty-five thousand.
I know, but that, that roof is already, what, seven, eight years, nine years old?
Right. And I think.
Carports would make more sense, but what, 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 because we've got the cars parked there, but.
Yes, yeah, and that was, that's definitely the chief's preference, um, and I think it makes a lot of sense. I was just out of training, um, in Southborough, at the Southborough Police Department, and they have carports that have the solar on it. And, um, it just protects the cars from a little bit of extra wear and tear.
I would suggest we move forward rapidly with at least some conversations with people who can give us good insight into whether going solar, at least for that building, makes sense. And if it does, let's get on it.
Yes.
Because I mean, we, you know, it's been open now, what, eight years?
Close to eight.
Close to eight years and we've, you know, it's been a problem since its opening, so.
Yes.
If we could use carports.
Seven.
I don't know.
Six, seven, twenty sixteen.
It is where it was open, so that would have been almost six years ago.
Oh, I thought it was twenty sixteen, but.
Anyway.
I've only served five and a half years.
Yeah, twenty six, six years, five and a half, six years.
I would think, though, looking at the, the rates here, um, if we did go for two years, it drops another sixteen thousand dollars a year off. Um, or even twenty-five months, I don't think anything's gonna change in the environment in this country as far as recovering from our inflation in the next two years. Um, I, I think maybe we want to take a chance and lock in for two, um. You know, if the rates stay as they're projected to be, it's a fif, um, seventeen thousand dollar a year saving for two years is thirty-four. If, if we guessed for the one year and we're wrong, then we, first of all, only save sixteen in the one year and, and they could lose it all back the next.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I don't think I'd wanna roll it out to three, but I think maybe we, we roll it out to twenty-five months and take the advantage of that fifteen point four cents instead of the fifteen point four five.
At least in the, at least in the short term.
Mm-hmm.
And that'll give us some time to get going on the solar down there and that will take a chunk off it.
Well, when, when will the.
I'm inclined to agree that I don't ex, I wouldn't expect the rates to go down, you know, before, you know, within, so it's twenty, you know, this goes to December of twenty-five.
I mean, we still got another year before we'd go into these new rates.
Correct, yeah, it would be a year from now that we would go. So we have one year left of, um, our electricity rates being eight point nine cents.
Can we run extension cords to the public safety building?
Oh, trust me, that wouldn't be a better idea, unless we go solar.
We could run the generator.
It might be cheaper still, though, it's, it's, um, you know.
I wonder what the schools are paying? I do not know.
I can reach out to them and see what they're paying, but I don't know.
Just to see if they've got a better deal from somebody.
Yeah, I don't know if, um, we could roll into that.
Well, I don't know if we could or not.
I, I could reach out to Dr. Moore.
Excuse me, I don't know whether schools are gonna do solar.
They, they buy, they buy, they buy their, a lot of their electricity off of solar fields that they've invested in, but I don't know if they have, uh, what their rate is and, you know, how they.
I wonder if this is a chance for us to get with other of our local communities and, and perhaps purchase together in, in pursuit, um, you know, five towns together as in the lower rate.
Well, see, if you've got Mass Municipal, I mean, already, they've already got a group of us, right?
Right, so it's.
Pretty big.
Yeah, it's similar to, um, how, how our insurance is priced out is that, um, we, since we go through the Mass Municipal Association, um, the more towns that gain, get into that, um, contract, the lower the rates go.
Can you just, for the heck of it, find out how many, how many, when, call them and say, how many, how many people are in your group? I made it, I imagine it's pretty huge.
Yeah.
They may all be in it already, exactly, but it's, it's just worth.
Ask a question.
Any aspect to look at it to maybe get something else or a, um.
Okay.
So we don't need to act on this tonight, though, correct? We can.
Um, I do need you to act on it tonight just because the electricity rates, the updated rates for the public safety building are gonna, um, go up by about fourteen cents within the next two weeks, like November first.
Well, I know, but they won't come on this, will they come on with us? I don't think, I didn't think they'd come on.
So they come on to our current rate at point zero eight eight nine if we agree to an extension.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, if you agree to an extension.
Then we gotta agree to the extension.
Versus thirty-two cents.
And it's silly not to agree to the extension.
So the only, I, I, I think the real question is which extension?
Which extension?
Yes, that is the question.
I, I think Greg makes.
Paying four times more for electricity for that building is.
Crazy.
Yeah.
It's a substantial use.
So I think, I think, you know, going to twenty-five months is probably, um, I mean, no matter what we do, it's not as low as we'd like.
Right, that's, that seems to be the middle of the road. It's, it's, it's pretty good discounted to there, then it really drops off after that. I mean, you get another six thousand, but that extends us another year.
Yeah, and I mean, it all.
You would hope things level out by then.
Yeah, and my, and my guess is it's all dependent on the price of oil, which doesn't look like that's going up, going low to, to, to.
Right, and I would hope in the next three years, they, um.
We have a different plan.
Fix that problem.
Yeah. Uh, we have a second, or first, or motion?
I would move to extend to, to, to approve an extension of our electrical contact, contract for twenty-five months from November twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three to December of two thousand twenty-five for, uh, the rate, uh, rate available to us.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to extend our contract with, um, I guess it is, this utility group from November twenty-three to December twenty-five at the rates presented by the administrator assistant. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like a vote, um.
And then the last thing is the police union rep.
So we'll be going into executive session for.
But, um, before that, I just need, um, and this is done in open session, is a police union contract negotiations rep.
So which one of the three of us would like to be involved in the police union contract negotiations?
I suppose it's my turn. I haven't done it, I haven't done any negotiations in five and a half years, so, uh.
Is that a good thing?
Well, it's been easy on me, that's for sure. Um, I've got a lot of stuff going on in the past and I didn't get involved in the last round.
You know, and I, and I would, and I would, if you can't or whatever, I would, I would be happy to be your, um, alternate.
I would move to appoint Greg as our representative for police union contract negotiations, uh, with Maureen as the alternate.
Um, we have a motion made and seconded?
Sure, I'll.
Seconded to appoint Greg as the primary negotiator for the police union contract with, um, myself, Marshall, uh, acting as the alternate if necessary. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like it's a vote.
I make a motion to move to executive session, Madam General, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically lieutenant. And we will exit only to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Sam.
See you, Chief.
Motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purposes noted in the agenda. Those in favor?
Dixon, yes.
And Sullivan, yes.
Marshall, yes.